I will now call the July 1st, 2013 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will reach into the legislative allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those of you in the audience, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's city council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. If not, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kovač.
Aye.
Councilman Lexi.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Coekepper.
Aye.
Care unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation by Central Jackson County Fire Protection District Chief Steve Westerman. Welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a great honor to be here tonight. As you are well know, we do have an EMS levy question on the ballot in August, and we wanted to take the opportunity to bring you up to date on where our campaign is, but also show you the presentation that we've been providing the public to this point. And now it's not coming out. Okay, sorry about that. As you know, we are a full-service fire department. We offer all of the traditional services, fire suppression, fire prevention, but we also have some specialty services in there. We offer a heavy rescue team. We are one of four heavy rescue teams recognized in the metropolitan area. Those rescue teams have been sponsored and funded by UASI funds in the past years. Also, we are one of seven hazardous materials teams in the metropolitan area, again funded by the UASI funds. And we also join with Blue Springs, Grain Valley, Lake Tapawingo, in EMA. But seventy percent of our time is in EMS, and that's what we want to talk about tonight. In 1992, as you are all aware, the city decided to get out of the delivery of the service, but at that time wanted to maintain the license for the service. The license is nothing but a piece of paper essentially, but it does outline the geographic area that you're allowed to provide ambulance service, and it gives you the right to provide ambulance service or limit ambulance services within that area. As a result, you put out an RFP. Several entities bid on that RFP, and CJC was awarded the contract, and we've held that contract for the last 21 years. But with the responsible stewardship of that contract and the funds that you have provided us, we have ended up being one of the premier, I will say, premier EMS services in the area, and we have some things that we've been providing that are not even done across the country. So we are on the cutting edge in many different areas. I want to talk about call distribution for a second. These are the number of calls in 1989. Each dot represents ten EMS calls. You'll notice once it fills up, particularly the difference between Grain Valley and Blue Springs. At that time, Grain Valley was about 1% of the calls. Right now, and this is 2012, they represent about 14, 15% of the calls, and those calls have tripled in that time. Total calls across the area, we are up to about 30,000, 3,500 EMS calls. We also look at some of the measurements as far as how we do as an EMS delivery service. One of the most important is response times, and we call that the phone-to-door time, the time we get the 911 call to the time we reach the patient's door. We took over our own dispatching service in 2006, and obviously, there was a learning curve at the beginning, but as we grew through that learning curve, we are down to eight minutes and actually down to 7:45 right now. We've done some changes in our call processing time, particularly how we respond to EMS calls. We follow EMD, which is Emergency Medical Dispatching, and that's where the dispatcher will ask certain questions before anything was dispatched, and a whole list of questions to find out what kind of response needed to be made. We've changed that and cut, we haven't cut the questions out, but what we do now is confirm the address, confirm the type of call it is, the major complaint, and the phone number that they're calling from, and we dispatch the call. So the trucks are rolling, and then the dispatcher will come back on the phone, get the rest of the information, and deliver the information en route. One of the other measurements is out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. That means having a heart attack on the street, on the road, and being able to walk out of the hospital alive. The national average for that is 6%. Seattle, Washington is one of the first really paramedic programs in the country. They are well-known for their delivery service. They are also the home for the American Heart Association, so they have thousands of citizens that have been trained in CPR, and they assist the medic system in Seattle on providing CPR for civilian heart attacks. So theirs is up at 50%. They also provide some of the same treatments that we do. But we're at 50%. Obviously, we're not the home of AHA, but because of some of the treatments we're providing, we're at the 50% mark too, and that percentage has just gone up in the last couple of weeks because we've had a couple more saves and people walking out. This is a testimony-
No one, what the doctors have told me, they did a fantastic job, and they couldn't have got here any sooner. I mean, if it hadn't been for them, I wouldn't be here. You know, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for her, and I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. And I tell you, just personnel themselves, as human beings, are wonderful. I would ask everybody to support this, because they are a critical part of the community, and we need to do everything we can for them.
The her that he was talking about was his wife, and the dispatcher was giving her CPR instructions over the phone until we got there, so that's why he was responding, or referring to her also. Some of the advances that we're doing that a lot of other departments, and I mean a lot of other EMS services, are not delivering. We're providing 12 lead acquisitions, that's the monitor, 12 leads on the heart. We get a full picture of what's going on in your heart at the time we respond. Code ice and code STEMI are two different treatments for various heart and different types of heart waves when we respond. Code ice, we simply cool the body down to about 91 degrees, much like jumping in a very cold, ice-cold lake. And we actually induce hypothermia to slow the body down, not only brain functions, but heart functions and other bodily functions, so we can provide treatment through pharmaceuticals and also get you to the hospital quicker. Code STEMI is in conjunction with St. Mary's and Center Point. That's, again, a different type of heart wave, but once we find out that that's the actual type of wave, again, certain treatments are provided, but we often get the patient into the operating room within 20 minutes, and they're providing stints to the patient that quick, and those people, many of those people are walking out. The blue machine that you see around the dummy there is an auto pulse that is an automatic CPR. It provides CPR while the paramedics are doing other items, other treatments. We've also introduced hydraulic stretchers that has reduced an enormous amount of workers' compensation takes for us. Also, RSI rapid sequence innovation, electronic reporting. Many of this equipment has been provided by both the city through the capital improvements and CJC in some of our bond issues.
From a technology standpoint, from personnel, from education, from protocols, you're top-notch. You guys take quality of care to the nth degree, and you invest in it. You invest in your training of your crews, of your people. You have high expectations, and you deliver. When CJC is here, we have no worries. We know they know what's going on, they know how to do everything, and we have such a high comfort level in their care of patients. That's priceless, and that's what the community needs to understand, is that there is a difference because you have that high expectation and because you have invested in the training, in the personnel, and in what you expect as a service provider, because there are options out there, not all of them what we want.
Obviously, that's from all from St. Mary's, and they are a very close partner with us. She mentioned training and education, and that is one of the things that we are very proud of. You've all probably been in our training center, but that is one of the savings to the city also over the past many years. We have not really charged you for training, but we have conducted that ourselves. To be a paramedic requires what we call certain merit badges, and you have to maintain those merit badges, if you will, or certifications in different programs in order to maintain your paramedic license. If we were to contract out all the CE, continuing education, that we need for our department, it would run between $300,000 and $400,000 a year, but that has not been a charge to the city over the years, and we've taken care of that internally. One of the reasons we've done that internally is we also provide that training to outside people. We have our own paramedic school, so if, Councilman Carter, if you want to become a paramedic, come to school for two years, and we'll put you out on the street after that. And that's done for, and not only our own people, we send our own people through, but also citizens of the community. And we've also had constant attention on our accreditation. We are one of 170 departments worldwide that are accredited. We only put this up here not only to draw your attention to the accreditation, but to also mention that EMS is a big portion of that accreditation. This is not a pencil-whipping process, and I know Chief McCoy is familiar with the program for the law enforcement, and it's not either, but you have to be very specific in the programs you provide, and they look at staffing, they look at positions of equipment, response times, and a whole host of things. We just went through our second site visit, so we're getting ready to be reaccredited in August. National standards is a part of that also. National standards call for two paramedics on all major life events or all major life-threatening incidents, and we're meeting that 97% of the time, and there's not too many departments that can approach that level. In order to do that, though, and I'd like to point out that the contract that we have with the city over those 21 years only calls for 18 people, 15 paramedics, three EMTs, and we've provided the rest of those. We currently have 51 paramedics. And that brings to the point, many people ask us why we always send an engine with the ambulance, and it's that very reason. We staff the ambulances with one EMT, one paramedic. If that ambulance is out, and the rest of the paramedics are on each engine every day. If the ambulance is out on a call, which they often are, the engine responds, and we can, with the paramedic on the engine, we can start providing the EMS treatment and wait for the ambulance to come for transport. Once the engine and the ambulance get there, though, this is much, some of the treatments that you saw, the code ice, the code STEMI, it's much like a pit crew at a NASCAR race. It takes that many people to deliver those treatments, and everybody has their own job, and everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing in order to deliver that level of treatment. It's more like we're bringing the ER to you instead of you having to go to the ER, and that's the type of level of service that you currently enjoy. Now we get to the money issue. The total cost of the service is 2.5 million. Since 1992, the city has been providing, as the budget has grown, the city is currently providing 2.2 million, and CJC is also contributing about $300,000 to that budget. Through billing, and this is 2012 numbers, through billing, the people that we transport, you receive 1.4 million dollars back, so the subsidy from the city is approximately $800,000, again, with the $300,000 added from CJC. That budget does not include capital improvements, as we all know, that was extra, and that is negotiated each year and put into, some of it's put into your CIP, some of it is put into our bond issues. So that's not represented in that operating cost. In 2012, we started the discussions on how to transfer the license, and CJC is now receiving those billing receipts. The issue is, obviously, the city is going to start reducing the amount of subsidy, and CJC has to have some method to come up with the 1.1 million, the 800 and 300. In this transfer, there'll be no changes in the, with the transfer of the license. Again, it's just a piece of paper covering the geographic area, and the city fathers back in 1975, when this first started, had a lot of foresight. Why they picked CJC boundaries, I'm not sure, but they had a lot of foresight at the time, and it's worked out quite well. Obviously, CJC's flexibility will increase. We are not asking for any new staffing in this issue. It's everything maintaining the same. And out of the campaigns, that's probably one of the hardest things to sell. In a lot of campaigns, whether you run it, we run it, the school district runs a campaign, you pay for this, you're going to get something out of it. What you're getting out of this campaign is maintaining the level of service that you currently have, and sometimes that's hard to portray and hard to sell. But it also, and probably the most important part to the council, is that it relieves service and fiscal responsibility to the city of Blue Springs. In this, we do have a three-year transition plan that we have discussed in the past, and the subsidies that the city will pay will decrease over three years. This year, it's 7.25; next year, it will be 500,225, and then zero. So we had to come up with a plan to increase CJC's income to match that decrease in Blue Springs subsidy. The agreement hinges on a 15-cent levy. This will be August 6th, and over three years, the first year will be a nickel on your property taxes, second year will be a dime, third year will be 15 cents, and every subsequent year will be 15 cents. As far as the cost to a homeowner, this is for a $100,000 home, and this is per-month costs. And the reason we did this is everybody, most everybody, has a mortgage, and in that mortgage payment that you pay every month is your property taxes. The mortgage company will take the property taxes out, put it in an escrow account, and then pay the personal, or, excuse me, the real estate property taxes at the end of the year. So for the first year, when a nickel is applied for a $100,000 home, and for your home, you can do the math, the first year it would be 71 cents a month, second year, when a dime is applied, it would be $1.58 a month, and then 2015 and subsequent years, it will be $2.38, or about $25, $26 for a $100,000 home. $200,000 home, approximately $50. This is CJC's levy. This is not dispatch levy, this is not debt service levy. This was our regular fire, general fund fire levy, and this is our tax ceiling up around $1.9. But if you remember, in 2009, we passed a half-cent sales tax, and with, by state requirements, by state law, the half-cent sales tax, we have to roll back equal to 1/4 cent of what we collect. So we only receive and get to use 1/4 cent sales tax. We have been rolling, the first year in 2010 was only a half-year of collection, that's why that one's a little bit high, but ever since then, we have been rolling back over 16 cents each year off of your property taxes. With the passage of this levy, first year would be a nickel, again, second year a dime, and third and subsequent years 15 cents. We would still be under our ceiling of what we're rolling back, and what we're rolling back will continue every year. That does not change. So with that, we have, CJC has enjoyed over the past 20, 25 years, a very supportive community, and we appreciate that. The men and women of CJC really appreciate the support that we've had in the past. We hope that can continue, and that's the presentation we've been giving. We have given it a probably dozen times so far to probably 200, 250 people. The response, I'm glad to say, has been very supportive in this. I will tell you that there has been one question continually come up, and that's, what's the city going to do with the money that they're keeping? And we don't answer that, obviously. We refer that back to their councilmen, and that would be your question to answer, but that's really the only, and I won't say it's a negative question, it's not put in a negative way, it's just a question that's been asked, and that one continually comes up. But everything else has been super supportive, and EMS is one of those things that every time we give it, there's typically somebody in the audience that has received the benefit of it, and they will typically stand up and give a testimony right there. That's our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Chief Westerman? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Chief Westerman, thank you for your continued service to our community over the years and for everything CJC does. 20 years ago, you're right, the city of Blue Springs did hold the ambulance service just out of the building over here. We had city employees doing that. And 20 years ago, when this transition occurred, a lot of those employees entered employment with Blue Springs and went to CJC. I'm just wondering how they're doing. Is there any of them still around, or?
There's a few around, the rest of them have retired-
Okay.
-out of our system.
Right.
Nobody left, but there was a few of them that have retired. One of them is even, two of them have been promoted to captain now.
Right. That's awesome to hear that. Obviously, 20 years ago, you wondered, you know, when we did start contracting out, how it was all going to work out, and you definitely created an elite ambulance service, and do appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that's one of the reasons the city kept the license at that time, was we were new at the business, we understand that, and there was a question whether we could handle it or not, but over 21 years, I think we've proven we can.
Oh, definitely, definitely. You know, the, one of the things that's not too clear in the presentation, and I want to address that other question you brought up, is what happens if the proposal doesn't pass? I've not heard that answered all that-
And that question has come up on occasion, and the answer we're giving is, there's really three options. One, the city could continue in the process that we've had over the last 21 years, but I also counter that by saying it's been made pretty clear that the city does not want to do that. Option two would be, and we would hope that the city would allow us to go through the process again and run another campaign and put it on the election, on the ballot, at least one more time. The third option is you can bid it out, and it would end up going to a for-profit company.
Okay, you're saying that you would not bid for it again, then?
Oh, we would, but-
Oh, you're saying you wouldn't win?
I don't know.
Oh.
But you-
You're saying you can't-
The city has said that you don't want to continue in the present contract or-
I wasn't aware of that. I thought we had a pretty good deal going, so, and I thought a good service, so. You know, relative to the other question you brought up, what's the city going to do with all the money? That's, you know, as a taxpayer, that really concerns me, the fact that, you know, Blue Springs has collected taxes for this since the 1970s, when it got the ambulance service, and when we terminate the service, we still continue to collect the tax, and then ask CJC to go out and get a new property tax increase for everybody. To me, that's duplicate taxation. So what I propose, and I make the motion to my colleagues, that for every cent that you raise your property tax levy, the city of Blue Springs deduct that from their tax levy. Therefore, to the citizens of Blue Springs, they will receive the benefit of, you know, they won't have to pay that same tax twice. So if you say increase it by 15%, and the voters agree with that, I make the motion the city of Blue Springs reduce its property tax rate by 15 cents as well. Colleagues? Do I hear a second?
Yeah. There is a motion? And it dies for lack of a second. Any other discussion or comments? Again, Chief Westerman, I appreciate you coming and making the presentation. Certainly, my tenure and dates, time on the Blue Springs Board of Alderman dates back to where the ambulance service was run from behind City Hall, and Louis Cox was the EMS director. So that really dates it. Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing, and Chief Westerman, appreciate you coming here again and making this presentation. We have, as has been stated here, have had a very good and very tremendous relationship working with CJC. I might just make one clarification, Chief, to what you said regarding the budget and perhaps a plan going forward. This council has not taken any formal action to say we're not interested in going forward with a continued partnership in the event that this were not to be successful. What we have said, and what I have gone on record with you saying, is that, and you had started your presentation by talking about an elite service that you provide, and as you know, that impairs and puts certain constraints on the budget, and the conversation we have had is that going forward, we may need to relook at the types of services that are provided, and certainly, when we talk about subsidizing the city of Grain Valley and the calls there at 15%, I don't know that the citizens of Blue Springs are aware that, you know, we have had a subsidy that has been as high as $1 million. So 150,000 of that is going to citizens of Grain Valley who aren't currently paying for that.
And many, out of the presentations, that has been a question, that what is Grain Valley paying, particularly when they see that slide, and we are answering nothing, obviously, to that, but that question has been asked, and from Grain Valley residents.
So from my perspective regarding the budget, certainly am hopeful that you're successful in your initiative, but if it's not, we will certainly sit down at the table together and reevaluate all the options, and I'll take policy direction from the council on what it is that they'd like to do.
I apologize if I misstated anything from our conversations. In any election, no matter what the issue is, but particularly in public safety, when you put something like this on the ballot, it's the people that decide what level of service that they want, and that's what we're asking. What level do you want?
Any other comments? Councilman Kovač?
Question for you. When you do make that known to a Blue Springs resident, have you had anybody protest the fact that if this were to pass somehow, that the Grain Valley people would be paying for their share where right now we're subsidizing them? Was anybody upset about it?
Upset about that, no, because they understand that it would be everybody spending their fair share at that point. So nobody's upset at all.
Good.
Councilman Carter?
Also, Lake Tapawingo, right?
Exactly. Anywhere in the district.
Yeah, Your Honor, and let me add to that just a minute. This proposal that CJC has got out there would, everybody outside the city of Blue Springs would start paying in their, by their property taxes. My statement is, is that the city of Blue Springs has been collecting that tax now for a long time, and we shouldn't have to pay twice, so why not roll back the tax rate for just the city of Blue Springs?
And that motion was made and didn't get a second.
I hear you.
Your Honor, permit.
Councilman Edmondson?
And Chief, having sat through a couple of these things, I've seen-
Sorry about that.
Well, no, but I've seen where you've made some changes and made some things very clear that were a little bit confusing in earlier presentations, so my compliments to you and the staff for doing that, because you reacted to some of the input that people gave and tried to make it more clear and more precise, and I think you've done a good job of that.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to pass that along.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm left, there are no other questions. Again, thank you for coming, and we certainly wish you success on August 6th.
Thank you very much.
Is it August 6th?
August 6th.
Yes, okay.
And the only thing on the ballot at the moment.
Yes.
So every vote is important. Every year. Okay.
Okay, that takes care of the presentation from Central Jackson County, and again, thank you for coming. The next item is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2013-14 through 2018-19 capital improvement.
Your Honor, I have one exhibit to offer. It includes a city council information form, July 1, 2013, from Jim Holly, Assistant Director of Community Planning Development. PowerPoint presentation, slides from June 17 city council meeting. City Council Information Form dated June 17, 2003, Planning Commission Memorandum dated June 10, 2013, and public notice submitted to the examiner and published on June 15, 2013. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of this hearing.
All right. Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. And before this evening is the public hearing, and therefore, final step in the process of adopting this year's capital improvements program, again, the fiscal year 2013-14 for six years through 2018-19. Again, this fulfills the charter, city charter requirement for a public hearing prior to adoption of the CIP. The public notice was published on June 15, and here we are July 1 for the public hearing. Again, as City Administrator Johnson mentioned, there is information in your council information form packet related to the last city council meeting, June 17, which included a full copy of the draft CIP. There was some discussion at that time, which was noted in this meeting's council information form, and with that, again, just want to move forward here with the public hearing. Stand for any questions that staff may be able to answer, and obviously, at your discretion, Your Honor, open up for discussion for the public.
Any questions of the council? Mr. Allen, before we go to the public? Seeing none?
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Speak in support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Before we close the public hearing, no comments from the council? Seeing none? Close this public hearing. So everyone would like to introduce a bill 4256, adopting the capital improvement program.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4256, ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2013-
capital improvements program for fiscal years 2013 and 14 through 2018-19.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Second discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4256, an ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs capital improvement program for fiscal years 2013-14 through 2018-19.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levessy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kowal?
Aye.
Carrying unanimously, giving it ordinance number 4435.
Next, we have introduction, reading of bill 4257.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4257, an ordinance providing for a sales tax in the amount of one-half of 1 percent for the purpose of providing funding for local parks and calling an election on the question of whether to impose such sales tax and designated in the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion? Councilman Levessy, and then Councilman Fowler.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first start out by apologizing for being out of pocket the past few weeks. And many of you know I've been in Austin, Texas, doing some job training, and that's why I list the last council meeting where this subject was brought up. And so I appreciate you guys keeping that in mind. I did do my makeup homework and watched it online, also available on cable channel seven, and made sure to kind of stay up to date on the presentation of the park tax and, of course, the information we've been presented. And this is a kind of an important issue to me. It's not something I've taken lightly. I've grown up in Blue Springs and I've used the Blue Springs parks for most of my lifetime. I told the story when we started this process of I proposed to my wife in the gazebo in Railroad Park, and now the park we live a block away from, so we take my son up there and now have multiple generations of Blue Springs residents using the park. So it's something important to me, but through this process, I've had some concerns. They're not new concerns. I've expressed them to staff from the beginning, talked with some of you on the council about them. And for me, this is kind of has been an issue of competing priorities. And none of us is new to that. When we talk about budget, it always comes down to where are we going to put the money? What are we going to do with it? And I think that's kind of the position the Parks Department finds them in now. I have, over the last few weeks, talked to park commissioners. I probably talked to a majority of them, probably not all of them, but a majority of them. Talked to residents in my district, done the research I could to kind of establish the direction that I feel I should take as a representative looking at this issue. And to me, when I kind of look at specifically the citizen survey, it's kind of the direction of the priorities the citizens have in town. When you look at the overall satisfaction of the top three things even that the citizens of Blue Springs are satisfied with, the parks comes in, park facilities comes in at 81 percent. Sort of every service that the city offers, they are third most satisfied with the parks in the city of Blue Springs, at a level at 81 percent, which is 10 points higher than the national average, 12 points higher than the Ken City Metro average. And so we've been doing a good job, I think that's reflective of what staff has done with what they've had over the years, of providing a good quality park system. And that's something that I think we've always enjoyed here in Blue Springs. Even when you drill down on that, the number one thing that they're satisfied within parks is the number of city parks at 84 percent. And believe it or not, the maintenance of city parks they're satisfied with, 78 percent of those surveyed, has said they are satisfied with the maintenance that we are doing with city parks. And in my discussions with the park commission, first of all, let me say, Your Honor, you have done a great job picking your park commissioners. Every single one of them is passionate about this issue. They all were very clear about the need to have a vibrant park system moving forward and the quality park system that we need in town to be everything from economically viable to just providing a good quality of life in town. But the thing that always comes up as the things that citizens are least supportive of or least satisfied with, it always comes down to streets and maintenance. When you look at the top priorities that we need to be focused on, especially over the next two years, the maintenance of streets and sidewalks comes in at around 50 percent. Traffic flow and congestion comes down around 49 percent. And you don't actually see parks come in as something the city needs to be focused on until around the sixth one down at 17 percent, or even park activities and park recreation until about the eighth one down at 12 percent. So when we're looking at priorities, when I'm trying to gauge what is important to the citizens of Blue Springs and what I need to be focused on as a councilman, I'm seeing a pattern of parks are important, and I support the activities in this proposal. I've been a big supporter of public art. I keep threatening my wife that I'm going to go try out for the city theater, and she assures me that as soon as I have time to complete the honey-do list, I will have time to try out for a musical. So that's on my to-do list, that I hope to be a part of a Blue Springs city theater someday. But me specifically, as I have reflected on what I have commonly talked to the citizens from multiple elections now, of what I am here to do and what I am about on the city council, it's to keep the city focused on essential government functions. This is a quality of life proposal, and I am a firm believer that we need to maintain a good quality of life in Blue Springs. Currently, we're at about 78 percent satisfied with the quality of life, and that's not good enough for me until 100 percent of Blue Springs residents are satisfied with living in this town. That's going to be my goal. But when it ultimately comes down to this proposal, I more than appreciate the work that the park commission has done. I've been through these proposals before, and I know what it takes to go through the data. I appreciate what Councilman Carter said the last council meeting, that ultimately this is going to be a decision for the people, that they're going to decide if this is the kind of city that they want. And I would fully respect any member on this council that would say, we need to put this in the hand of the voters. But I just can't, I just cannot be comfortable with what I have told the citizens I represent that I am here for in supporting, putting this on the ballot for at least this coming November. I'm not even saying ultimately we don't need a park, a consistent park funding source, because I just don't think that that's something that we need to provide, and there is a maintenance issue in the parks. But even this proposal allocates about $620,000 annually to the maintenance of the park system. The number right now we've been given is 15 million, and one park commissioner, I think, said Christine has even projected that to be 18 million, even as early as next year. And that would still put us 15 to 20 years out before we are even catching up on our deferred maintenance based on this proposal. So I am not going to be a roadblock to this process. I am not going to be voting to put this on the tax, on the ballot tonight. But if, should it pass, I'll support the education funding. I think it's important the citizens know what they're voting for when there's a tax issue. But those are my comments tonight, and I appreciate you letting me do them.
Thank you. Councilman Fowler, who were next?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Councilman Levessy, I appreciate all the thought you put into that, and I know it's a difficult decision. Remind me about where I was at about 10 years ago when a community center was on the ballot back then. And I, my experiences have been, you know, that things can get accomplished without tax increases. Administering Parkway, it wasn't there when I came on in office. Hidden Valley Park with all its, you know, Hidden Valley Park, Vesper Hall, the golf course, the conference center, Grounds, Grounds Park, Remember It's Like, all these things have been done without it, without tax increases. And I certainly admire and aspire to the goal of building a community center. I think it'd be good for our community. I'm not always so sure that a tax increase is the way to get it done. I think we can do it and live within our means, so.
Okay. Any other comments, Your Honor? Councilman Carter?
Well, I appreciate all that you both said. I just think we're at a crossroads, and I've struggled with this myself. It's needs versus wants. And when I came into office, we were talking about a public safety tax. That was a need. We definitely had to do that, and we did it. So now we're at the crossroad of what kind of community do we want to be moving forward? You mentioned deferred maintenance. I saw the figure of 11, 12 million dollars in the budget in the CIP that was non-funded. That's not going to happen without some sort of funding source dedicated. Now, hats off to the Parks Department. They've done it with baling wire and string for, I don't know how long, but it's not going to happen without a dedicated funding source. I was uncertain about the community center until I sat through the feasibility study and we mapped the thing out. The bottom line is, it comes down to if this thing passes, we'll get the community center, which will be state-of-the-art. It will definitely put us in the top tier of cities in Missouri. We'll get deferred maintenance addressed. If we don't pass it, we won't get anything. It'll be what it has been, and they'll still be, you know, trying to get money, dollars and cents, out of whatever the budget is, which, you know, it's wants versus needs, so parks is going to come down near the bottom. And then we get to the point of we have a lot of parkland in this city that will never be developed without a dedicated funding source. And as we continue to grow our population, especially out south, there's dedicated parkland out there that won't see a swing set without some sort of dedicated funding source. So I came at it very much on the fence, sat through all the meetings, was the liaison to the Parks Commission for the first three years I was on the council, got to know all those folks very well. They've worked very hard on this. Yet, in the beginning, I was still, I'm not sure about this. What I am sure about is in our system, put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. And if the voters don't, if they're not where I am right now, that's fine. But let's put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. That's what I can do.
Anybody else, any other comments? Yes. Councilman Edmondson?
If I may. Good input from all councilmen here so far. Councilman Levessy and I have had numerous conversations about this, and we've had conversations with staff concerning, concerns we have. And I share a lot of those with Chris, some of those I have from the business side of the community, that will this community support an additional tax and increasing? Seems like we have an ever-increasing tax base that keeps going up and keeps going up. And I always wonder when you hit the top where all of a sudden you're going to start hurting yourself as far as doing benefit, you know, the benefit is opposed to the damage. You know, I did start out in this city on the park commission years ago, so I know there's needs for that. And looking at the proposal and how this all breaks out, my conversation with Councilman Levessy, I expressed that the money being budgeted towards maintenance and deferred maintenance, it'll take years for us to get caught up. Just the cost of the air conditioning handlers and units on Vesper Hall is two years, almost two years' worth of that deferred maintenance. So some of my concerns is, well, how are we ever going to be able to do that? Even if we do pass this, are we really able to get ourselves caught up? Are we just going to be treading and keeping our head above water? Councilman Carter, my compliments to you, because some of your comments have kind of swayed me from being on that fence of going either against or for. I do think we do need to put it out, let the people make their voice heard and make that decision. My concern is if we don't do it now, we may never have another opportunity, because other entities are out there looking at state level, other areas, as far as increasing the tax base county-wise. We may miss our window of opportunity to bring something to the community of Blue Springs that we don't have and that possibly the citizens want. So where I came into this meeting unsure whether I was going to vote for this or against this, I feel now that I can probably vote for it and at least let the citizens make that choice, at least put it out there for them. So that's my comments on the subject.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Councilman Kowal?
As I looked at this, first of all, I appreciate everybody's comments. They've all been very thoughtful and well thought out. I, one of the concerns I have is along the lines of what you said, Dale, is this, I was here on the council when we decided to respond to the citizen survey in regards to the difficulties with our streets. And we took a lot of money out of the general fund and put it towards streets to 3, 2.5 to 3 million dollars a year in that area, because that was a very low item on our survey. It's climbing. It's coming up. But I'll never forget sitting in Roscoe Ryder's office and him telling me what the impact that might be on our parks. And so while we have a very high acceptance rate of where our parks are, it's because we've taken very good care of our parks over the years. But some of that funding that we've put to streets has been essentially taken away from being able to deal with deferred maintenance issues in the parks. And so what happens when you do that is you begin a slow deterioration. And it'll take a while before it shows up on the citizen survey that our citizens are not happy with the condition of our parks, because it's going to take a while for the parks to deteriorate. But we're already sitting here with 15 million, somewhere between 12 and 18 million from the numbers I've heard tonight in deferred maintenance. I'm now liaison to the park commission, and the numbers that I looked at in regards to this were 15 million. And I've got this book sitting in my office about, what, two inches thick? Is that right? That shows what all those items are. And my concern is, part of our responsibility is figure out a way to solve problems, not necessarily wait for the citizen survey to tell we have a problem. If we already know that we're probably in decline on something, we need to be thinking about how we're going to fix that. And putting off 15 million dollars' worth of deferred maintenance and providing no solution to that makes, puts us at a risk that the parks that our citizens are so happy with, they're not going to be happy with anymore. I think that they will understand that when they look at this issue. And I think for us as a council, when we have a, an opportunity to fix this problem now, presented to us by our park commission, to say that we somehow know better what our citizens would agree to or not agree to, when we aren't making a decision to put a tax on them, but they are, that it's contingent on us to put this in front of the voters and let them decide what they want their city to be. And I think it's very important that we support this issue and give our residents the opportunity to take the advice that's coming from our park commission and from, and turn that into either maintenance of the quality of life or a recognition that maybe our parks are going to start declining or continue to decline. So I would encourage you all to at least give the voters of Blue Springs the opportunity to tell us what they want, rather than take that out of their hands, so.
May I say one more thing?
One more thing, and then Councilman Culpepper.
Okay. Would you like to go first?
Sure.
Ladies first.
I just want to echo some of the sentiments. When we saw the evidence presented to us by the Parks Department, I was appalled at some of the condition of the paths and the maintenance that is lacking in our parks right now. It's not going to get any better, because people want streets. You have those necessities. And so those items in the parks are going to get pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And this is what we need to do, is give the voters the opportunity to tell us, yes, this is what they want, and they are willing to support it. And I think we have a responsibility to put it before the residents of this city.
It seems to me. Thank you, Your Honor. It seems to me that if we set up this dedicated parks tax, all of a sudden, you don't have parks competing with every other department for general fund. And coupled with that, something else we talked about tonight, the CJC. No longer are we going to be spending that subsidy on ambulance service and buying ambulances. So again, that's more money going into fixing sidewalks. Councilman Fowler, you showed pictures of areas of town that need repair in the worst way, both streets and sidewalks. I mean, if we set up parks on their own, so they're not fighting with every other department for funding, all of a sudden, we've got more money for streets and sidewalks. And I know those are two very important areas. And Councilman Levessy, you talked about, you know, how that's kind of what our responsibility is. Well, let's take that responsibility. If the voters think that it's time for a dedicated parks tax, of the top 30 cities in Missouri, I think we saw in the last presentation, there are only two, including us, who don't have a dedicated parks tax. I mean, that puts us kind of behind the curve, in my view. So that's the last thing I'll say on it.
I'm going to repeat something I said at the last presentation. Shortly after I became mayor in 2008, we assessed what the, and when I say "we," not me, but all of us, some of the needs of this city. And the number-one priority at that time was infrastructure. We needed to connect Moreland School Road with Leggett. We needed to make improvements on Southern Highway, and we needed to address to the west Waschaffele Road. We put that on the ballot. We didn't make that decision because we didn't have the money to do that. So we put that on the ballot, and the people voted for that 84. Also, there was a sewer component to it, a bond issue for sewers. The sewer issue passed with 84%, and the streets passed with 80, right at 82%. The voters made that decision. Then we were confronted with the federal government saying that you've got to have a radio system in place by January 2013. We didn't have 12 million dollars laying in the drawer that we could go pull out. So we made our case to the voters. We need to pass a half-cent sales tax. They did, with 60% of the vote. Now it's time for us to address some quality of life. And that quality of life is keeping Blue Springs a premier city that people choose to live in. And they like to feel safe. We've got a great school system. They like to feel safe. They like to have good roads, good streets, good sidewalks. But they also like some other amenities as well. You know, we've done well as far as bringing restaurants to Blue Springs. Not nearly enough for my satisfaction, but hopefully we will continue to do that, to where we will not have sales tax leakage to other communities. And so now it's time for us to ask the people, are you willing to continue to be a city that you can be very proud of, that can offer these amenities, not only with the community center, which I think would be great to have, but also the deferred maintenance on existing parks? We're starting to make some improvements on a shoestring budget, competing with everybody else. I've been up to Pink Hill Park and saw some of the nice things that's going on up there. But a lot of that equipment is dated and probably not even as safe as they should be. Again, we got parkland we've bought down south that's undeveloped, that needs to be developed. So basically, what we're asking is allow the people to make their decision. Simple as that. Nobody can come and accuse you and say, "Well, you voted for a tax increase." No, you did not. You voted to allow the people to choose. And I would encourage all of you to take that very seriously and give the people credit. The people don't want it, they'll tell you they don't want it, they'll vote against it. But people have been very supportive of this community. That's why just about every school bond passed, because we are proud that Blue Springs has one of the best school systems, not only in the state of Missouri, but in the nation. And that's the way we want to feel about the City of Blue Springs and the amenities and the quality of life, safety and everything else that goes with it and making it the best. I'm a cheerleader for Blue Springs. I'm an ambassador for Blue Springs. I shout it from the mountaintop, that Blue Springs is a great place to live. And I've lived here 40 years, and I don't want to go back. I want to continue to go forward. I want this to be a place of choice, a destination. Amen. I'm done. All right, Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I'll be very brief here in this tremendous discussion by the council tonight, and of course, staff always appreciates the policy direction we get. I'll just remind you very quickly, you just adopted a six-year CIP plan that has one funded park project in it for the next six years, and I believe that's a building and facilities project.
Dredging.
It's the dredging of Rotary Lake, which no one will notice because it's covered up by water. And there's 146 million in proposed unfunded projects that approximately 45% of those relate to parks and recreation. And so if the voters, if the voters don't support this, ultimately, if you put it on the ballot, then we will have to retool our priorities, we'll have to refocus, and we will continue to have extensive competing priorities. But I can go down this list of unfunded projects, and there isn't a week that goes by that I don't talk to somebody in our community, either on the city council or a constituent, who calls me up and says, "When are we going to get Rowan Oak extended from Adams Dairy Parkway to Porter Road?" Councilman Cobell, you ever had that phone call?
More times than I can count.
Or, "When is the city going to improve Adams Dairy Parkway to Pink Hill and make that final connection?" Or, going south, "When are we going to consider making an improvement to Wyatt Road as it goes west or east to Adams Dairy Parkway?" And there isn't a project on this unfunded list that hasn't been vetted, hasn't been brought to us by a citizen, a constituent, and an elected official. It's been reviewed by our planning commission over and over and over again. And when we talk about, you know, it's been wonderful that we've been able to fund Adams Dairy Parkway, as Councilman Fowler pointed out, without going to the voters for additional tax increase. You probably have lost track of what it costs for us to pay for those beautiful streetlights that comes out of our general fund operating budget that's added over $500,000 a year to our electric budget. We didn't ask for a tax increase for that. But those types of programs that we have added to our budget over the year suck up capacity from our operating budget and divert funds that we could be using for other things like quality of life. So I just want to remind you, I'm supposed to be the numbers and budget guy. There's lots of different ways we can look at these numbers, but you just approved a six-year CIP that includes one park project.
Okay, there is a motion, there is a second. We have had a lot of discussion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
No.
Okay, motion passes.
Second reading of Bill Number 4257, an ordinance providing for a sales tax in the amount of one-half of 1% for the purpose of providing funding for local parks and calling an election on the question of whether to impose such sales tax and designating the time of holding said election.
Okay, motion first, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Will it be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Is there a second? Now, is there a need for further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I do respect all the comments made tonight, and I, outside of that police tax increase, I don't recall one in my history that goes unanimous to the voters. I mean, and that just shows that taxes are difficult decisions and important decisions. But I do know that our community generally backs, you know, important issues, and this would be a good one for them to decide. So I respect working with everybody and all the hard work that everybody's put into this.
Appreciate your comments.
You bet.
Okay, further discussion, not roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Cobell?
Aye.
Councilman Leveson?
No.
Carrie, giving it ordinance number 4436.
That brings us to merril announcements. I want to remind everyone, the Fourth of July is forthcoming. We have sent out correspondence to all the residents, reminding them to enjoy the Fourth of July, but be safe, be respectful of your neighbor. And also, we will be enforcing the ordinances that we have on the books as well. There will be a fireworks display at Peavy Stadium. The gates open at 7:30, and I think the fireworks probably start at between 9:00 and 9:30. And we want to encourage everybody to come out and enjoy that. I think KFKF is one of the sponsors of that. Councilman Carter?
Actually, I think the gates may open earlier because we're going to do the National Anthem at 7 o'clock, and our first band will go right after that. But there'll be live music, two full bands, Six Degrees West, a great local band, and then Tyler Farr, a young man from Cass County, currently has one of the top 20 singles on the country chart. He'll be performing next. And then I believe you do the countdown, and we shoot off the fireworks.
Last year, not only did I do the countdown, I did some singing.
Really?
Yeah, but not this time.
We'll put you in the band.
So we want to encourage everybody to come out and enjoy that. You'll have a lot of fun, and it's a safe environment. And last year, I recall, I could see somebody else doing a fireworks at a distance. And I'm not sure if it was independence, at least I'm to someplace. But I could also hear very biased comments coming from our audience, saying, "Ours is much better than theirs." So, you know. So we even compete when it comes to fireworks. Those are the only announcements, so I'm going to bring up Thoughts to Punda, and I don't have an art for it, but it says, "Common sense and common knowledge are two of the most uncommon things in the world." End quote. Don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?